Good evening. We're still waiting on a few board members, so what we're going to do is the part of the meeting that's not voted on, which is the fun part, the recognition. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the recognitions, and we have a lot of them tonight, as you can see. It really warms my heart because this is what it's all about, and it's our students, and to see them here and being successful. Thank you first to all the parents and important people in their lives that are out there. We couldn't do it without you and partnership. And all the students, we do have cupcakes and cookies, but you have to take a picture with us first, okay? Then you get all the food. But thank you very much, and look, see, I started talking and it was the magic, the magic wand there. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and start the board meeting now that we have our quorum and go right into recognitions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to call our meeting to order, our April 16, 2025, Illyria City Schools Board Meeting. We can all rise for our pledge allegiance?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will introduce our board members. We have Mr. Brent Parker to my right, Mrs. Annie Garstarfin to my immediate left, Mr. Len Howser, board member, Anne Schloss, our superintendent, and Colleen Abhold, our treasurer. My name is Elaine Segwin, and we are without Mr. Mike Gephardt tonight. All right, so moving on to the board recognition, and Anne's gonna take it from here.
Great, thank you. As I said before, thank you so much for supporting all of our different programs. We have a lot of different programs here tonight. We had a huge recognition last board meeting, too. We had so many, we had to split them. This is a good problem to have, right? So I'm going to first call up Matt Sowarka, who is our middle school athletic director. We decided a few years ago, the important part of building our programs is to start with our youth, and he's done a great job. So Matt, you steal that mic, yes?
All right, thank you guys for coming out. To start, I actually am bringing somebody up here to help give out all of our things today. I could, oh, I could call him Mayor, but he's actually coaching our student staff game tomorrow, and I wanna get some playing time, so can we bring up Coach Brubaker to help give out some things? All right, now, to help introduce our first group, it's gonna be our boys' basketball team. Before they come up and talk about our players and hand out things to our players, I do wanna recognize our two coaches. That'd be Kyle Raspert and Tavon Kurtz over there. They did a tremendous job this year with all of our kids. We knew we had a really good group coming in, but they continue to push the kids, continue to expect more out of them, and honestly, I could not be happier with how they handled everything. So they're gonna come down here and they're gonna introduce our players.
Congratulations.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Tavon.
I'm separated from you guys.
Welcome on down.
You can come.
Stay down there.
We're gonna shake hands, yeah?
Oh, my goodness.
It's probably a broken one.
I moved it all the way down there.
Bunch of cuts.
That's too much work. I have to read mic tonight.
All right, so players, when you guys come down, come down here, get the award, shake hands, and then shake your hands going all the way back down, okay? Got it? All right, our first one is Alliance Anderson.
This is good.
The coach just started it.
Way to go, buddy.
Congrats. Congrats.
Yeah, go that side now.
Javonte Carter. Demetrius Dalton.
Good job.
Good job, Demetrius.
Who wants to say, "Congrats"?
You just wanted to be different, right?
Drew Gibbs.
Good job, congratulations.
Kalan Jackson. Jamil Johnson. Kyler Larick. Anthony Parker. Trenton Casada. Kayden Higginbotham.
Way to go, buddy. Look at you, winning two awards tonight, buddy. Two awards.
Congratulations.
Kalan Jackson. Jamil Johnson. Kyler Larick.
Way to go.
Anthony Parker. Trenton Casada. Kayden Higginbotham. Way to go, Kai. All right, before we get the coaches back to their seats, I do wanna say a few things about the team. So overall, the group, they won the SWC. They went eighteen and O, which was impressive. But I'd say more impressive than any of those or either of those two things is they continue to push each other and they continue to push themselves. We had some guys on that team, sorry, we had some guys on that team that came in that had played for multiple years, that came in and knew exactly what to do from day one. We had some other guys that hadn't played organized basketball before, but they worked together, they picked up their teammates when they got down, they pushed each other to get better, and I could not be more proud than I am on those eleven guys, so thank you, guys.
Way to go, guys.
That's awesome. That's amazing.
All right, next up, we're gonna go over robotics, and to come up and introduce everybody is Mike West.
Hi, appreciate you guys having us here today. We have a unique group of individuals here to kinda recognize. Our robotics program is separated into all kinds of different groups, so we have a group of elementary school kids that compete in elementary school division, we have middle school kids that compete in the seven, eight division, we have eighth graders that compete in the VRC division, we have high school kids. So we really have run four programs here. So our kids, they really compete all year long, our season is significantly longer than anything else that we do. We run like six to seven months. So what we brought here today was our coaching staff, and we brought some kids here that won a state championship this year. So I have in the back Jen Smith and Angie Burgess, who are in staff.
They don't wanna come up?
Hey, you two have to come up here, sorry.
There we go.
If they applauded for me, you have to be acknowledged.
Nice try.
And we have Janine Stapier as well, who's going to introduce the kids.
Angie says, "I get one, too."
All right, so the group of kids that are here today competed in the elementary school and the middle school IQ State Championship. We have two teams here that won sportsmanship awards in their respective divisions. As a team, as a program, that is the award that we put the most emphasis on because we wanna represent Illyria, we wanna represent our individual schools, our program, our coaches, and ourselves, so we're ridiculously proud of those awards, but we also had a team that actually won their tournament and won a state championship today. So for the rest of their lives, they get to say they were state champions. The coolest part about them, though, is they're seventh graders, and they competed against seventh and eighth graders, so they get to try again next year.
Okay, so our state champions, their team was 44113T, and they were called the Fantastic Four. So that was Chucky. Zack. Trenton. We are missing one from that team, Jayden, he couldn't make it today.
All right, Trenton.
Double champion.
And then our middle school team that won the sportsmanship award was 44113V, we are Groot, and that was Jillian, Cordelia, and Kylie.
Congratulations. I want a picture with him, okay?
Good job.
Good job.
Good job. Makes sense, right?
Little basketball, that's all that.
And then our elementary-to-school division team that won sportsmanship was 44035D Deadpool, Alara, Vivian, and DJ. And if you couldn't tell, all of our team names are based off of the Avengers this year, so hence the Groot and Deadpool.
Congratulations.
She had that look like, "What do I do next?"
Thanks for recognizing these guys. We really try to not put any emphasis on the coaches, it's always about the kids, so thanks for getting them up here and acknowledging that. Nice job, guys.
And while he won't put acknowledgement on the coaches, I will. Can you guys give them a round of applause, please? All right, and our next group that we're going to acknowledge is our Special Olympics team to the stage, or up here. I'm gonna call Kevin Corp and Ashley Shorts to introduce the team.
Okay.
It's on.
It's on, okay. Before we introduce the kids, there's a few people I wanna introduce. Special Olympics, we kind of get forgotten because it happens during the summer when everyone's on break, but we take, Miss Smazzy's been taking for over twenty years, kids down to Columbus, and it's just not for today. It's for three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we're with the kids, and most of these kids have never been, it's the first time that they're staying away from their parents, which is a cool experience for them. We stay in the dorms at Ohio State. Last year, we were on the track in the field in the horseshoe, where most people just look at, so it's a cool experience. We're up at six in the morning, we're till about ten at night for three days, and it's nice because they sleep the whole way coming back home. Miss Smazzy has done this for over twenty years, volunteer, and she's taken at least a hundred and fifty kids down to Columbus. Miss Ashley's at fifteen years, doing the same things. Where's Miss Bonnie? Miss Bonnie, Miss Bonnie has driven the bus, if you've ever driven in Columbus by the college, you're on one-way streets, and she gets us to where we need to be. It's amazing what she does for us. We have Will over there, Will's been volunteering for nine years. This is my tenth year, and we love coming and doing it every year. But for the kids, we got Aaron Daniels, look at all the medals around Aaron's neck. Aaron, last year took, well, shake your hand, Aaron. Aaron took first place last year in the hundred-meter race.
That's my trivia, buddy.
Then we got Evan Miller, where's Evan? Evan, last year, took first place in the mini javelin. Yes, these guys are throwing javelins.
Way to go, Aaron.
Mini javelin. We got Cameron Jackson. Here he comes, okay, Cameron's coming up. Last year, Cameron participated in the hundred-meter in the softball throw. Good job, Cameron. Ricky Landings not here tonight, but he participated last year. Everyone knew Ricky in the high school, and he did a great job, and he was a great leader for our kids. James Hall, come on down, James. James is the best player in it, kid. Shake some hands, James. Shake, no, shake their hands. James probably would have come in first in all his races, but he loves waving at the crowd when he's running, and so James always has done a great job for us. And their last athlete, Mackay Harris, come on down. Mackay, last year, participated in a hundred-meter run in the mini javelin. As you see, he's got the medals around his neck. And once again, Miss Bonnie and Will back in the corner, they've done a great job for us. And Miss Ashley now is taking care of Special Olympics. Hopefully, we can do it for another twenty years, but it's a great program.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys wanna shake again, or how about high five? Okay, we're gonna high five this way. Thank everyone.
High five.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Way to go, guys. Way to go. Way to go. Good job, Ian.
Good job, man. Good job. Good job.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll do pictures with teams over there at the backdrop, and cupcakes, cookies there.
All right, we're gonna take a brief break, we're gonna take team pictures over there, and then cookies and cupcakes over here.
All right, we're gonna continue. All right, moving on, we do not have any presentations, so it's time for visitor comments. The school board encourages and appreciates citizen interest in meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the board will meet twice during the month and will make accommodations to allow public participation. Persons wishing to address the board up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-up sheet indicating the topic they wish to address, or make a written request to the treasurer's office one week in advance of the board meeting to speak for up to ten minutes. Each meeting participant will be invited to speak directly to the board so that their remarks may be clearly heard and questions may be asked. In order to assure that the board is able to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner and to complete its regular agenda, the public comment time period of its regular board meetings shall be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Persons requesting the opportunity to speak shall be called in the order in which their request is received by the board. Any member of the public who is not able to give their public comments as a result of the maximum public comment time period being reached is invited to submit a request to speak at a subsequent regular board meeting. So we do have one gentleman that signed up, Mr. Jonathan Higginbotham. If you'd like to join us at the, or not join us, but the table and state your name and address.
Get your mic up. Oh.
Is it on?
Yeah, I just have to talk.
Okay, my name is Jonathan Higginbotham, I live in 1010 Dodge Drive in Amherst. I'm here to support my friend Ramon Gilbert, his sons go to Illyria.
My name's Ramon Gilbert, I stay at 320 Summer Street. My kids go to Eastern Heights Elementary.
Okay.
So we're here to address a few concerns, I'm here to, like I said, to support my friend, and I've been a part of this, him and his sons since he's had them. The first thing is that he's currently temporarily banned from the school for something that he didn't even have nothing to do with, and we're still trying to figure that out, and the superintendent signed off on it, and we tried to contact her several times about that, and we kept getting passed off to other people who said we needed to talk to her. So that becomes a concern for us, because he can't even come interact without there being problems at this point with his sons, and both his sons have IEPs, which also becomes an issue because we're just now getting his son Zion into a different classroom that better suits his IEP, and here it's the end of the school year, so we're really concerned about all these situations going on, and it's not being addressed properly, you know, and on top of that, we're trying to figure out why the school keeps making allegations towards him when he doesn't have nothing to do with nothing that they're talking about. So like, we're here to find out and try to resolve all these issues that are going on because at this point, it's become troublesome, and it's interfering with everyday life, and it's affecting his ability to help parent his kids through school, on top of that with him not being able to, you know, do anything, you know, and whatnot. So like, all these things have become real serious issues, and we'd like to get to the bottom of it and resolve all this. You know, I don't understand how, you know, the school, like, when I went to school, it's completely different than it is today, I understand that, you know, but there are some things, like, I don't understand that when I hear these things or when I witness these things, like, I can't comprehend it. Like, how is a school allowed to allow these things to go on? I mean, how is their staff properly trained for all this stuff?
And then, like, and it's like an emotional thing, though, too, because I don't like, like, I don't like being treated like, I feel like I'm a criminal, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't, I'm involved with my children, and like, I need to be, I need to have access to my children all the time, just in case anything happens. But with this being stated, like, even with my stepson, like, you know, I couldn't even get him, you know, they go to a different school, I wouldn't even be able to get him if there was an emergency, but that came up. So I'm, like, we're here today just trying to address the issues and get everything resolved and just move forward.
Yeah, because like I said, at this point, it's just become, it's become extra on everything, and you know, like, you know, him as a parent, you know, and a single dad, you know, that's extra weight on top of having to work and raise two sons and, you know, everything else, you know, and like I said, we've tried to reach out and contact people, and this is where we've come up. You know, this is the first time we're actually being heard about any of this, other than when we had a meeting with the school a few weeks ago, that's when they finally decided to change his teacher, you know, and, you know, right now, it's going okay, but, you know, with his disabilities, you know, that's a subject. So, you know, this becomes a real concern because at the end of the day, you know, his older son is not being properly educated, like, you know, and that's become a huge issue as part of life. And with the things that have been going on, for an example, like, he was allowed to call home, and he told the staff that his dad said he could call home if he didn't eat lunch in Kid McDonald's, like, you know, this has never happened before, and how are you just allowing it to happen now? You know, like, that doesn't make any sense, like, you know, usually when kids get in trouble or when they do or say certain things, which is another thing, that some of the stuff ain't being reported to him like it's supposed to, you know, we didn't find out certain stuff until a meeting, which, so he has to, how do you go back and address something that happened previous before, you know, and whatnot? So like, all these things have become a huge issue, and at the end of the day, the ones that are getting hurt, the most is the kids, because if you look at the way our society is, once they turn eighteen, you can't do the same stuff you do as a kid. And from the result and everything that I've seen that's been happening, that's the route it's gone with his older son because, you know, they allow things to happen, and because he's smart enough to know how to manipulate it, and that's what he's been doing since, you know, and, you know, like I said, they finally switched his teacher, but that's going okay for now, but I know his disability, I have similar disabilities, so I understand that, it's just a matter of time before something serious comes up again, you know, and, like I said, these are all problems, you know, like, we send our kids to school, even when I sent my kids to school, you know, we send them to be educated, you know, and this has not happened. His son is going on almost ten and has trouble, you know, think he can read and write. Now, that, to me, is a huge problem, you know, and from another thing that I'm seeing, you know, just from the years that I've been going from Lorraine schools with him being my neighbor to now Illyria schools, like, he had issues there, now he's having issues here, you know, and so it's not like it wasn't documented throughout the time, so why did it take so long to fix the measures or even attempt to fix the measures? Like, it's April, like, the whole school year is gone, so how does that, how does that help his son? How does that educate his son? And how does the things that are allowed to be happening, you know, that's impactful on him because he's young and he doesn't know the consequences of everything, which becomes a problem in the future? Because like I said, once he turns eighteen, that's a different ballgame, you know, and that's not, nobody wants to see their kid go through that route, nobody, you know, not me, not him, not you, you know, and like, we're here, like, we've tried reaching out, we've tried doing different, and I've been helping him the whole way, you know, and this has become an issue. Like I said, we reached out to the superintendent three times, and we got passed off to somebody else each time, tell us we need to talk to the superintendent. I mean, how does that help? You know?
Anne Schloss, are you gonna circle back with them and then update us on what happens?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I mean, you wanna add anything else? I mean, I mean, like, we need this result, because at the end of the day, the kids are the ones suffering the most, you know, and that's, to me, that's not right, no, by public school, private school, any school, you know, that's just it.
I understand.
Okay, thanks for coming to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming to the meeting.
All right, do we need anything else?
No, we're discussing.
We have your contact information.
All right, we need to still stay here, or?
No.
No, no, you can go.
You can go.
I really appreciate everybody's time, and like I said, I'm sorry it had to come all the way to this, but we ran out of options, you know, and it's just become...
And the superintendent will update us then.
Thank you.
And grab a cupcake.
Well, I already have one.
Okay, moving on, the meeting minutes have been posted, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Garstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Howser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Board of Education items, we have none tonight, Treasurer action items?
Yes, thank you. To accept the financial report for the month of March of 2025 and all the enclosures below, and to accept the two generous donations from the Ohio Beef Council and Jerry and Cynthia Westfall for their $500 donation for the clothing closet, so thank you for those.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's action items?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Howser?
Aye.
Ms. Garstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Okay, Treasurer other?
Yes, to appoint two board members as primary representatives and the remaining three for alternatives for the expulsion hearing date for Wednesday of May 21 at 4:00 PM. Do we have two members that?
Yeah, we're, Annie and Mike.
Thank you.
And then the remaining will be the backup.
Thank you.
Okay, we do, we have to vote on that, right? Yeah, okay, so do we have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Garstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Howser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have a treasurer report?
No report.
No report tonight, okay. So moving on to superintendent action items.
All right, bunch of exciting stuff. First of all, asphalt and concrete paving. To approve the purchase of asphalt and concrete paving with always construction, just so you know, this is state bid, so we'll do some work this summer on our roads and parking lots, right?
No.
No, no, you can go.
You can go.
I really appreciate everybody's time, and like I said, I'm sorry it had to come all the way to this, but we ran out of options, you know, and it's just become...
And the superintendent will update us then, what happens. And grab a cupcake.
Oh, I already have one.
Okay, moving on. The meeting minutes have been posted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Motion carries. All righty. So, let's make out here. Board of Education items, we have none tonight. Treasurer action items?
Yes, thank you. To accept the financial report for the month of March of 2025 and all the enclosures below, and to accept the two generous donations from the Ohio Beef Council and Jerry and Cynthia Westfall for their $500 donation for the clothing closet. So, thank you for those.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's action items?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Okay, Treasurer other?
Yes, to appoint two board members as primary representatives and the remaining three for alternatives for the expulsion hearing date for Wednesday of May 21st at 4:00 PM.
Do we have two members that? Yeah, Annie and Mike.
Thank you.
And then, the remaining will be the backup.
Thank you.
Okay, we do, we have to vote on that, right? Yeah. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a treasurer report? No report. No report tonight, okay. So, moving on to superintendent action items.
All right, bunch of exciting stuff. First of all, asphalt and concrete paving. To approve the purchase of asphalt and concrete paving with always construction, just so you know, this is state bid, so we'll do some work this summer on our roads and parking lots, right? Also, excuse me, to approve the purchase of the new phone system hardware and installation from CDWG, not to exceed $300,000. To approve the home instruction tutors listed below. To approve the settlement agreement with the Alaria City School Board and Alaria Support Staff. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, superintendent other, and looks like there's quite a few.
I know, and I can't believe it's that time of year already, but we have our first of two graduation lists. This is the early college list of graduating seniors. To approve them. Also, to approve the May 20, I believe it's May 27th. I don't think it's May 28th, so I'm going to change that date because we're not going to get rain. That is the rain date. So, we have 406 seniors at Alaria High School graduating, and that concludes my action items for that. We need to separate them. Let's first vote on the early college.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the graduation list of students from Alaria College High School?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Christofin?
Upstaying.
Mr., Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the graduation list of students, a list of students from Alaria High School?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
How many is that this year?
406.
406? That's a little smaller, no?
Uh, it's right around the same as I believe last year.
Okay.
Yes, a lot.
All right, then, do we have personnel action items?
We certainly do. First of all, to approve the appointment of the following certified administrative staff, and we'll come back to that, but Amanda Belcher for the Assistant Principal of Alaria High. Also, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as listed below. We have a new school psychologist and kindergarten intervention specialist. To approve the retirement of the following certified staff member, Kara Kaminsky, grade five at Northwood, 27 years in Alaria.
Wow.
Also, to approve the supplemental contracts of the following certified staff member for extended time for a school psychologist. To approve the resignation of the following certified administrator, Natalie Matthews, Associate Superintendent. To approve the retirement of the following classified staff, we have Helen Buffington, lunch monitor at Ely for 10 years, and Jim Kennedy, tech support technician for 19 years. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff as listed below. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff as listed below, and that concludes my personnel action items. And I do have one introduction after you approve it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel item, action items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so it is my honor, first of all, I'm going to call up Jody Johnson, I know you're back there, but she will introduce our new assistant principal that is very exciting for all of us to introduce. So, take it away, Jody. Take it away.
Well, first, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity, Anne, and thank you to the board members for allowing me some time up here to introduce our new assistant principal. So, when I had the committee come together to start the interviews, I asked them a specific question, and I asked them, think about their role and what they were looking for in a candidate. We landed on three things. The first one was they wanted someone that had experience in the classroom. They wanted someone who understood urban education and understood our community, and they wanted someone who understood the initiatives that we were trying to do in our building and that we're trying to do in the district. So, I'm excited to announce that not only did we find our candidate, but we had our candidate already in our building.
That's right.
So, Amanda Belcher has been teaching for 18 years. She is, has done all of her teaching in Alaria City Schools. She has done all of her teaching at Alaria High School. She is a proud Alaria High graduate, and she's also a resident. I'm honored to introduce you to Amanda Belcher.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You know I'm proud of you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know it's kind of unorthodox in these situations, but it's what I wanted to do. I probably won't get through without crying, as I already kind of am, but, and it'll sound like I'm giving a short Oscar speech, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. As Jody mentioned, I'm a pioneer. I went to McKinley, Eastern Heights, and Alaria High School, class of 2003. I'm wearing a very worn shirt that says "Class of Forever" because we had these made at the convocation, and it was an idea that I came up with because I thought, I'm in it forever, and I know there's a lot of other pioneers out there that are as well. I've been inspired by some of the greats, like Don Randall, Ken Barnes, Matt Jablonsky, and Jane Byer. They taught me how to be a great teacher and a great human. Now, I'm inspired by the people here with me today and many that aren't, people such as Trysto Prechtal, Betsy Trump, Lauren Tobos, Mandy Pecorni, Kaylee Bonzio, Megan Diedrich, Megan Johnson, Ally Abraham, Erin Barrett, Kathy Daniels, Matt Daniels, Troy Hill, Molly Newbauer, Ann Runyon, Maria Gilmore, Carrie Dargo, and Brett Heiburger. There are so many more that I don't have enough time to name, but these are the names you don't get to hear often and that I witnessed giving everything they have for this district and this community. They deserve as much recognition as I do and more. Education is 100% a team effort, and EHS is a team that I am so proud to be on. I am, of course, inspired by our students and families every day. What they overcome and what they accomplish is nothing short of amazing. Leaving the classroom after 18 years, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, was not easy, but I'm really excited for the opportunity to meet the needs of our students and families in a new way, and I owe a huge thank you to Jody Johnson, Tim Brown, Natalie Matthews, and my friends, my family, especially my family, for their support through this process. And I thank you all for giving me the opportunity and trusting me, the board, and especially Anne, for trusting me in this role. I promise this is not anything short of simply passion for Alaria. So, thank you.
Yes, I got to follow that Oscar speech now, right? Couple, real quick announcements, tonight and tomorrow at 7:00 PM, so you can run right over there at the PAC, Eastern Heights Middle School is putting on two little shows called The Clearing in the Shoes, and one of them is student-written, so pretty exciting stuff. I had the opportunity to go this past Friday and take some of my mom and her friends to see the musical Little Shop of Horses. Xander, you did a wonderful job. And it was amazing. I'd never seen it before, and like that plant, that thing was...
I saw pictures of that.
Oh, my goodness, it was amazing. And is that where they got the, like, Venus flytrap? I don't know, but, you know, it looked a lot like a baby one. But it always amazes, it doesn't really amaze me because I've been around our kids for so long, but boy, are they talented, and I wish more people could come out and see the talent that our kids have. But kudos to everyone that participated. It was just unbelievable, and my mom, she's written me every day since last Friday saying how much her friends enjoyed it, and none of her friends are from Alaria, but they said they'd rather go to our musicals and plays than go down to Severance Hall because they think ours are better. And I said, that's a huge compliment, so kudos to all of them and the staff that spend so much time with our students to do that. Also, spring break, I know many, yes, yes, I'm right there with you, Xander. Spring break starts after tomorrow, and we wish everyone a safe and restful holiday. The craft fair this past weekend, got a lot of emails about that, too. I heard that was wonderful. And can't believe it, but May 9th, right around the corner, Special Olympics, so come on out and support all of our wonderful students from around Lorain County and athletes. May night. It's always a Friday, I believe. So, really excited about that, and just, again, tonight, just seeing all the wonderful things happening in Alaria really warms my heart, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anyone from the Board of Education have any things to add?
Two of the directors back there from the musical.
Two of the directors?
Yeah, two directors are back there from the musical.
Oh, Kaylee. Kaylee and Aaron.
Stand up, Ms. Bonzio and Ms. Barrett.
All right. I didn't see them back there. Yes. They, I would say they're the musical directors from the musical, but, sorry, I didn't see you back there, but wonderful, absolutely phenomenal.
Okay, and we do have an executive session. Do we have a motion to approve an executive session for matters to be kept confidential according to federal law?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
Which one?
You move, but I'll second.
So moved.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Christofin?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.